Good evening. Today is March fourth, two thousand and twenty five. We are in the Ed Bosch Freilich Meeting Room at Mandan City Hall, and it is five thirty P. M. Mr. Newbauer, would you please take the roll call, please?
Commissioners Braun, Roar.
Here.
Schoberg.
Here.
Heinchan.
Here.
Mayor Freilich.
Here. We will now have Deputy Police Chief Jason Beer lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have the agenda in front of you.
I move we approve the agenda from March fourth, two thousand and twenty five.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Roar, a second by Commissioner Heinchan to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Consider the approval of the following minutes, February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five. That was a regular meeting, city commission meeting.
Make a motion to approve the February eighteenth minutes.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. February twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five. That was a special meeting.
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes of the special meeting of February twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five.
Motion by Commissioner Schoberg, second by Commissioner Roar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Heinchan.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We have no public hearings, no bids, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that you would like removed from the consent agenda?
I would ask that item number one be polled, please.
Any other items? Okay, we will poll one.
Then I'll move that we approve items two through ten of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a commi- um, a motion by Commissioner Roar, a second by Commissioner Heinchan to approve items two through ten of the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item one on the consent agenda, consider a funding commitment letter for the North Dakota Emergency Services Advanced Assistance Funding in regards to the Cemetery Geotechnical Evaluation Project. Riley.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I can stand and answer any specific questions, but just kind of some background on this project. In two thousand and twenty four, the commission approved a budget amendment for the year of two thousand and twenty four and two thousand and twenty five to complete an evaluation of the slope on the east side of the Union Cemetery. We are currently about halfway through that project, and this agenda item is to submit a letter to N. D. Emergency Services to commit a portion of the funds we've already committed in two thousand and twenty five to apply for a grant that would then essentially pay for the second phase of this project.
Riley, the only reason I had this item pulled from the consent agenda is it might be because I'm seventy-one years old, but I found the the language of funding commitment letter kind of confusing. If you could maybe explain that not only to me but the folks in the audience here.
Mayor Commissioner Schoberg. So N. D. DS is requesting us to submit a funding commitment letter basically saying we will pay the twenty percent of the full grant funds. We've already allocated more than that twenty percent for this project, so we would then be essentially getting money back that we've already allocated. So that is the twenty percent that we are asking. Well, we're asking for the full hundred percent, sorry. Mix up my words a little bit. It's out of conference all day and I'm a little talked down. So we are asking for the full two hundred and, I believe, eleven thousand dollars, and then we have to commit the twenty percent, which I believe is around forty thousand dollars. And so this letter is committing that twenty percent of funds to N. D. Emergency Services saying, hey, we're willing to put up our twenty percent if you reimburse us for that eighty percent.
Okay.
I've done a bad job explaining that, so if there are more questions because of my explanation, feel free to ask them.
No, we're good. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Riley? Okay, done. What are your wishes?
I move to approve because I have number one.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Roar, a second by Commissioner Heinchan. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We have no old business. We'll go on to new business. Consider an offer on a city-owned lot. Andrew.
Evening, Mayor Freilich Commissioners. I was expecting the party that submitted an offer to be here for tonight's meeting. They are a young family, so I was wondering if we could maybe move this to number five to give them a little bit more time to get here.
When when would you like to move it?
Just to item number five, to see if they might be able to make the meeting late. They requested this to be presented this evening specifically to be able to address the commission, and they're not here.
Okay, we can bump it down.
For five, they could have a little more time.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to item number two. Consider adoption of the two thousand and twenty four Morton County Local Emergency Operations Plan. Pat Martin?
Good evening, Mayor Freilich and Commissioners. My name is Patrick Martin. I'm the Director of Emergency Management for Morton County. I come before you tonight to discuss the approval of a resolution of adoption for our two thousand and twenty four Local Emergency Operations Plan. Just a little back, little bit of background on the Office of Emergency Management and our responsibilities in the day-to-day programs of Morton County. We provide effective and orderly coordination of emergency operations and response. We work with numerous local volunteer, state, and federal organizations on an ongoing basis. More specifically, we work to develop and maintain our operations plan, local operations plan, emergency operations plans, excuse me, the multi-hazard mitigation plan, which we're currently in in review of this year, and several other response plans that are identified with our local threats and hazards. The the local emergency operations plan is basically a comprehensive framework that outlines our county's approach to disaster response. It's designed to coordinate efforts across all departments and agencies. The reason why I'm here tonight is because of the legal mandate of the the local emergency operations plans required by state and federal law to ensure the county's eligibility and the local city's response eligibility for disaster relief funding if it were to happen. The plan protects residents, property, and infrastructure, and ensures a quick and organized response. The local emergency operations plans, it's a collaborative collaborative effort between the local state and federal partners, and primarily comes out of our our local emergency planning committee. The most recent update in two thousand and twenty four, we included a livestock emergency annex, and we tested that annex last year in in a tabletop exercise, which we had participation from the city, P. D., Public Works, Fire Department. So overall, that went very well. But so approval by the Mandan City Commission gives the emergency operations plan official status, ensuring the city and the county departments follow a unified response strategy. So I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Are there any questions, Patrick?
I move to approve the resolution adopting the Morton County Local Emergency Operations Plan.
We have a motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Andrew, do you want to go back to item number one?
Yes. Mayor Commissioners, thank you for letting me kind of shuffle some things around there. The Mitlighters are here. We did receive an offer from them for the purchase of parcel six five six one zero two eight three five. This is a property that's down on Fortieth Avenue Southeast in Lakewood. I will share my screens so that you can see some of the agenda documents. Just give me one moment to get those pulled up. The offer that we received was less than what we were asking for, and it includes a little bit of background research that was done that the prospective buyers would like to have factored into the offer amount related to costs associated with improving the lot for development, bringing in builder, things like that. Thank you for bearing with me. On the screen, you should see the location map of the property. So we're just on the southeast corner of Shoal Loop, Southeast and Fortieth Avenue Southeast. To get your bearings, the Lakewood Elementary School is west of here and Raging Rivers, and that would be east of here quite a ways. The the Mitlighters do own the lot that is in front of this, that is on Fortieth Avenue Southeast, so our parcel is currently landlocked. The property has C. B. Commercial zoning, indoor land use plan designation of residential high density. Based on the city's comprehensive plan and adjacent uses, DAF does recommend denial. The applicant or the prospective purchaser does wish to address the commission this evening. Do you have any questions for me?
What did you say the zoning was for the lot the city's selling?
So both of the lots are C. B. Commercial.
Okay. Any other questions for Andrew?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Schoberg, there are a number of commercial uses that are permitted in different groups. Examples would be retail A, service A. Those are permitted uses for development on a C. B. Lot. The proposed use is a special use, and the city is not able to issue special uses where there's a land use plan conflict. Commissioner Schoberg, that is correct.
Andrew, do you have a Google Earth shot of the lot?
You should see it now. Of note, all of the uses that are within, I guess, six hundred feet are residential in nature, except for the Montessori school. And this is a street view of the property. Ours is in the back.
Mayor Andrew, what separates shop condos from being commercial is because they don't manufacture those. Well, what was the distinguishing mark of the shop condo not being commercial?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Roar, the city has designated multi-use shops or shop condos as a special use since two thousand and nineteen. It's my understanding that the reason for doing such is due to the tendency for them to be a little difficult to regulate. There's also some just kind of nuts and bolts requirements for the special use permit, such as a little bit more universal review of covenants and restrictions related to the kind of ongoing operation of the condo and the developments themselves. So we look at a number of things. Shop condos can have some negative externalities that might stem from them, particularly in a residential setting, related to lighting, traffic, hours of operation and use, and then as well as the more, I guess, kind of practical items around reviewing the covenants that that all kind of fold together into them being a special use here.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Andrew? Okay. If not, we invite the Mitlighters to the podium. Please state your name.
Good evening. My name's Stephen Mitlader. Thank you, Andrew Commissioners and Mayor, for letting us speak tonight. We realize you have a lot to go over tonight, so we'll be as brief as we can here. We moved to Lakewood in two thousand and seven. It's been great living here and watching Lakewood Lakewood grow. We own the vacant lot on Fortieth Avenue, and we would now like to develop it. We realize that there are some planning and zoning issues. However, we would like to address those at the twenty-fourth Planning and Zoning Meeting on the twenty-fourth. Yep. So the city's lot is landlocked behind ours. Our lot is now the only access to it. We'd like to prevent having an unmaintained vacant lot behind ours. By allowing us to purchase the lot, we'd be maintaining the lot and also paying the taxes, and ultimately hopefully bringing some more businesses and generating some more tax dollars for the city of Mandan. So at tonight's meeting, what my wife and I are asking for you to vote on is the offer on the lot, and as far as the planning and zoning, we look forward to the twenty-fourth Planning and Zoning Meeting to take care of those issues. But for tonight, what we're asking of the commission is to purchase the lot regardless what we do figure out, you know, for the planning and zoning, just developing it. We just see that that land would be rather than being left behind, it would be great to be able to utilize it. So I guess that's all we have to ask of you. Any questions for me, I guess?
Any questions?
I have a question for Andrew.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Mayor Andrew, why a little history. How did the city come about having a partial land that is that is locked back within itself, and it was was not part of this whole vacant lot beginning? Why is that special parcel back there belonging to the city? How's that happen?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Roar, according to our research, this was returned to us via back taxes. This property, this is how it was platted back when this Lakewood Commercial Park Edition was created. According to our research, it is not mapped as a wetland or a flood plain. It may appear to have the characteristics of such, but on those mapping assets, it does not. Doesn't.
So there are two separate owners on that lot of land at one time?
Commissioner Roar, that is correct, yes. Prior to the purchase of the front lot, the family that owned the Montessori School owned the front lot, and the city has owned the lot in the back for quite some time now.
And the purchaser here recently was aware of the situation where that access is very limited because of the city lot being back with within not within any kind of a access.
Commissioner Roar, our lot is the one that's landlocked and that has the access challenges to it.
The purchase was made knowing that there's this land back here that did not have access? Is that correct?
Mayor Commissioner Roar, that is our understanding that the applicant was aware of the city parcel.
So Stephen, you was aware when you when you bought that 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 was back to us landlocked? Is that correct?
We were aware of that vacant lot back there, and then our first meeting with Andrew, we asked about it, and he did say that you guys would, you know, entertain an offer on it or possibly be willing. And that's when we found out it was for sale in the past. And and yeah, I guess that's where we went through, found out how much cubic yards, because it is low, and how much it would cost to fill it, to see if it would be cost-effective to try and pursue that. And dealing with certain projects that we brought up with Swenson Hagan, they talked about like a three to one slope, or whatever development we end up doing with our lot, parking or anything, they just said, you know, it'd probably be good to try and have that. So that's kind of just where we, you know, met with Andrew and expressed interest in it. We just feel it'd be a benefit to us. So then when we're doing our developments, we don't have to worry about a three to one slope with, because that is a low spot. That whole thing is a is a valley back there. It would be nice to fill in whether we need stormwater, parking. It'd be a benefit to us to have, but at the same time, we feel it could be a benefit to the city as far as us taking over the paying the taxes on it, us mowing it and doing maintenance on it, which I did through the summer. I did talk to Andrew. When I said I was mowing our lot, I said, should I mow your lot too to just maintain it? And, you know, at that time, you said, maybe it's it's short enough that I don't need to. But that's where we just kind of figured, you know, we're right there, and it's a landlocked lot. Why have a overgrown development or empty lot behind whatever development we end up, you know, pursuing with the planning and zoning meetings? So.
Stephen, your purchase of this land is not specifically incumbent on having condo shops there. I mean, it could be other things that are within the purview of what the city would allow.
Yes, we're we're definitely open to that, and that's where we just started with Andrew, like we did present the special use application for shop condos. Shop condos are, that's where using the word shop condo is really hard for us to figure out which word is the correct word. We haven't even spoke about this, you know, we haven't even advertised what we want to really build here, but my best friend is half owner of Pinnacle Homes. He expressed interest. He would like to relocate their business there and yet have a building to park, you know, their trailers. My neighbor is a chiropractor, and she's currently in Bismarck but looking to expand. She just hired another chiropractor under her. She wants to expand. She said, well, what is this? I would love to put my office there, but yet have an open area to do physical therapy, have more room for, not necessarily a gym, but, you know, just a more open area. So that's where we haven't even advertised this. This was just through friends and neighbors that there's already two businesses that want to move there. So that's why it's tough saying the word shop condos. But we did submit to Andrew, I think you do have here, Andrew, like some of the drawings that we had builder for Source, show how on the corner of one of the shop condos shows more of an office. So that that's kind of where we spoke to Sarah and her father, who actually own this lot and develop, or they built the Montessori right next to it, the preschool. So they actually sold us the lot. It didn't go for sale. Yes, we used a realtor, their realtor, but it didn't go for sale. Like, they talked with us directly. We spoke directly to Sarah. So our intent is to not, like, that's why I I don't like using the word shop condo, because our intent isn't to have some industrial setting. Like, we've lived in Lakewood since two thousand and seven, own several properties down here. We know that we know what the neighborhood is, and we we want to try and bring in businesses. We want something that will fit into the surrounding, you know, we're not gonna, we're not trying to propose an ISO or anything, but when we purchase a lot, we are open to, I guess, working with the city, you know. But just tonight's meeting is we're after the offer on the city's lot, and then as far as, you know, moving forward with plans, we look forward to working with Andrew and then future planning and zoning meetings to get that figured out. That's kind of where we're at. And we we were aware of this when we bought the lot because it's currently zoned C. B. However, the two thousand and fifteen plan is it? The two thousand and fifteen plan switches it to R. M., I believe. So even though it's currently zoned for C. B., which you can apply for a special use permit for shop condos, the problem there, I think what, you know, Andrew's done a great job at his job as the planner, looking forward, what's the future use plan, was to change that to more of a multifamily residential. However, that was the plan, and it currently is zoned as C. B. So that's why we, I feel like it'd be great that, you know, that's more of a planning zoning meeting, not to take up your time tonight. That's why we asked tonight is more so for the purchase of the land. No matter what we do with the land, it's going to have to go through Andrew and that commission and be approved, but it would still be, we feel, a benefit to us and also the city for us to purchase the lot. So I guess.
Another question for Andrew.
Sorry.
So Mayor Andrew, the way I understand the order of business here is specifically whether or not we want to approve the purchase of the lot. Now, your your recommendations are based on what the lot is wanted to be used for. Is that the primary reason you're at this point in time recommending not to approve?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Roar, it's my recommendation that the city not sell land for a development that's proposed to conflict with its adopted plans.
But yeah, but we could, but we have not put any stipulations on that at this point in time, have we? I mean, the land's for sale, and if we come out and say, okay, we'll sell your land, but these are stipulations, we're not putting stipulations on at this point in time, are we?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Roar, at this point, no, I would say we have not enacted any.
So nothing, nothing's been decided. He, Stephen doesn't know what he's going to do. He just wants to buy the land adjacent to his land, correct? And that's what we're here to decide.
Commissioner Roar, Mayor Freilich, I would, I guess, argue that seems like a plan has been devised and shared with the city related to the proposed development. It's included in the packet tonight.
Excuse. So there has been a plan submitted?
Yes. Commissioners, Mayor Freilich, the agenda doc itself includes the proposed shop condo plan. I have it on the screen.
Mayor Andrew, with the proposed plan, it still has to go through planning and zoning, correct?
Commissioner Roar, that is correct.
And then it still has to come back to us, wouldn't it?
That is correct.
So the planning and zoning could not accept the plan, or we at the end could refuse the plan as well.
City is not technically able, according to its ordinances, to issue a special use permit for a use where there is a conflict with an adopted plan, such as the future land use plan. So I don't foresee this being issued.
I understand the process. I'm just trying to get to the to the basics of what business, you know, we we we're to do specifically here, and where it leads, you know, from that, it's still going to be up to other deciding factors.
Mayor and Andrew, I guess what I struggle with is there isn't a whole lot of, there's not a lot of businesses that could go in here. If it was, if it's not them in their potential plan, it's landlocked. So unless the Montessori grants access to a an M. D. U. Behind there, or there's there's really, there's nothing else that could go here except the Mitlighters, because there's no access from from it. If you pull it open, there's no, we couldn't, we couldn't put us, connect it to the street behind where the residential lots are, right?
Commissioner Heinchan, we could not.
So I mean, the the cost of the land, to me, the proposal, I mean, it's it's small in terms of what they are potentially going to put into it. If, and I agree with the Mitlighters, if it's not, I don't want to see it undeveloped either. So I would struggle with not seeing this go through to P. N. Z. and then potentially come back to us.
Andrew, Mr. Net lighter, can I address both of them in the same commentary here?
Sure.
Thanks, Commissioner Heinchan. It's a tough one. It's a real tough one. First of all, I'd like to applaud, um, Mr. Net lighter for his professionalism, your openness, your honesty, and your integrity in using this forum, most of all, to present your options. Okay. Um, I've heard nothing but good about you from, from Andrew. I'm, I'm the profile holder, portfolio holder for planning and engineering. Um, wish we had more folks like you, to be honest with you. However, our city is also, um, looking at enhancements to our planning and zoning, long-term plans. Um, I get the shop condo stuff. I got friends that own some down there on, on, on 24th, I believe, West, West, uh, here. There are some concerns that I have there. Number one is the abundance of construction trailers parked along, you know, 24th there, which causes problems in the wintertime. This is a classic example of how Americans, small town government should work, right here, between the city government and a citizen. Both of you guys, actually. However, in keeping with our attempts to, ongoing attempts to make things easier for developers, by not necessarily strangling you, but perhaps doing, um, being a little bit more definitive in what can and can't be built, not only for this parcel, and again, it is a landlocked, so it's like a juggling act for me, I build homes while I can stick around here. I, I've got a side with Andrew tonight. However, your character and integrity, you come back with something other than shop condos? I don't know what, right? What information we have tonight? Um, I don't know if the time is right to make the motion or not, Mayor.
You can make it.
But I'm gonna make the motion to deny the purchase option tonight. This place on your consent with plan. Options for other things that might not be completely two-story stall, you know? Might have some options for someone to minimize the concern that I have with a whole bunch of people who are interested in this. But I can't do it tonight. So I'm gonna move to deny the purchase.
We have motion to deny the purchase. Do I hear a second?
I'll second for discussion or comment.
We have motion by Commissioner Schoburg, a second by Commissioner Rohr. Discussion?
I don't think this, Mayor, I don't think this precludes Stephen from a different plan in the near future. In other words, uh, he's not shut off from still purchasing this land the way I understand it, that the option is still there, but it's going to have to be in a, a different auspice of thought than presently presented. Am I correct in saying that?
I would, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That was my comment.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Rohr.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Onto item three. Consider a growth fund committee recommendation for a storefront improvement application for 1307 First Street Northeast. Madison?
Yes. Mayor Commissioners, Mandan Growth Fund Committee met on February 20th, 2025. Agenda items included consideration of an application of storefront improvement of 1307 First Street Northeast by Stephen Kealan. And I'm going to show you on the screen what we're kind of talking about, the building right now. You guys have seen it on First Street. It's, uh, the one right beside Langen Chiropractic, Chiropractic, um, with the white. Uh, the building at 1307 First Street Northeast was, in addition, built by Apex Builders LLC in 2022, with the unfortunate and unforeseen passing of North Dakota State Senator Doug Larson, owner of Apex Builders LLC. The exterior of the building was never finished. Plans are to remodel the existing building to match the exterior of the new building that was finished on the adjacent property, as well as update the existing building's exterior finishes, doors and ADA doors, signage and windows. The proposed scope of work includes diamond coat siding, brick and stonework, new lettering for windows, and replacing some of the front windows with new, newer, larger windows with bron, dark bron, bronze energy efficient windows. Um, let's see here. Can show you guys on the screen now kind of what he plans on doing with the middle area. Okay. Improving the building will greatly enhance the corner on which it is located. Surrounded by very nice local businesses, which are all well maintained. It will add a more modern office building feel and will complement the local businesses and residents in the vicinity. The estimated cost of these improvements is a little over $67,000. The applicant is applying for a $30,000 match and funds will not be dispersed until the project is complete and expensive, verified by staff. The Mandan Growth Fund voted 8-0, one absent, to recommend approval of the storefront improvement application for 1307 First Street Northeast by Stephen Kealan for up to $30,000 in matching funds to be structured as a forgivable loan contingent upon receiving Mandan Architectural Review Committee approval. If you have any questions, I can try to answer them, but Steve Kealan is also in the audience and he can try to answer them as well.
Any questions for Madison? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the storefront improvement application for 1307 First Street Northeast by Steve Kealan for up to 30,000 in matching funds to be structured as a forgivable loan contingent upon receiving Mandan Architectural Review Committee approval.
Second.
We have motion by Commissioner Rohr, a second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Rohr.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Agenda item number four. Consider a growth fund committee recommendation for a storefront improvement application for 1311 First Street Northeast. Madison?
Yes. Mayor Commissioners, um, this would be a part of the project as well on the same block within the same building. So the Mandan Growth Fund Committee met on February 20th, 2025. Agenda items included consideration of an application for storefront improvement of 1311 First Street Northeast by Stephen Kealan. Um, and then on the screen, you can see what I'm, uh, feeling I'm talking about is the one connected to the one we just approved. So on the corner there on First Street. The building at 1311 First Street Northeast was recently used as an automotive repair shop. The current condition of the building is commercial metal and steel siding with dents, rust spots and holes that need to be filled. The windows are not energy efficient and the wood is rotting. The cement building also needs new windows and some exterior work. Um, plans are to remove all metal siding on the building and replace it with a mix of minimum maintenance materials such as LP, hardier board, steel siding, and possibly brick and stone, and as well as changing the existing windows in the metal building, replacing all windows with dark bronze for more energy efficient, repairing and repainting the current building block, and then adding landscaping rock around the building on the east side entrance. Um, I think I have. And on screen, you can kind of see what he has planned. It's similar picture as you just saw. Um, so it will be on this side of the building. The estimated cost of these improvements is $143,200. The traditional match is 30,000 for a building, but there is a provision in the storefront improvement program guideline that allows up to $60,000 for buildings on corner lots. The applicant is applying for a $60,000 match. Funds will not be dispersed until the project is complete and expenses verified by the staff. Um, the Mandan Growth Fund also voted 8-0, one absent, to recommend approval of the storefront improvement application for 1311 First Street Northeast by Stephen Kealan for up to $60,000 in matching funds be structured as a forgivable loan contingent upon receiving Mandan Architectural Review Committee approval. Again, if you have any questions, I can try to answer them. And Steve is also here as well.
Mayor Madison, uh, 1307, 1311 are adjacent, right? They're, they're part of a one building complex. Is that correct?
Mayor Commissioners are correct. They're all in the same.
The, the two applications come in the fact that they're, they're separate businesses. That would make them differentiate from being one application?
Mayor Commissioners Rohr, they are separate parcels. So,
Parcels, okay.
Yep, yep. So there are actually three parcels in this vicinity. Yes.
So that's what, separation, definition is, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Madison?
I move to approve the storefront improvement application for 1311 First Street Northeast by Stephen Kealan for up to 60,000 in matching funds be structured as a forgivable, forgivable loan contingent upon receiving the Mandan Architectural Review Committee approval.
Second.
Well, motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Schoburg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Agenda item number five, legislative update. Mr. Newbauer?
Mayor Freilich and Commissioners, um, as you may know, that last week started the crossover break, um, where bills from the Senate side need to be moved out of the Senate side over to the House and from the House need to be moved over to the Senate. Um, they are currently on a three or four day break. We'll probably come and back in, um, tomorrow. Couple of bills, and I sound like a broken record, but we still keep talking about House Bill 1176, um, which in addition to increasing the primary residence tax credit, also places a 3% cap on expenditures or property tax, um, that we can receive, um, year over year. And it looks like that bill will probably be the, if I were a betting man, that's the one that will be moving forward, probably at a very quick pace over the next few weeks. Governor Armstrong has shown his strong support for this one, along with many of the legislative leaderships. The, the bill also indicates that if you don't need a full 3% increase, you could bank, say, that 1% for a period of five years before you needed to use it. Also contains a provision that if you need more, if you need to increase your expenditures or the amount of money that you levy, um, over that 3%, you could take that to a vote, um, of the people. And if they would approve that, that can be approved for up to a four year period. Then after that, then at your evaluation in, or your, your increases are capped again at 3% moving forward from that date. Um, again, it seems like this is the most likely vehicle that will be moving forward. Um, there's another vehicle, um, House Bill 1575. It's kind of rare to see two bills like this move from the same house, um, to over to the Senate. That one places, um, a cap on taxable valuation. So when you compute your property taxes due, you take the true and full value times 50% um, times the commercial percentage or the residential percentage. And that's the commercial percentage or the residential percentage is the part that they're looking at reducing that. In essence, would provide some tax relief on that side, too. That one, um, again, that would apply to all commercial and residential, um, properties. Um, the 1176, the first one I talked of, what, that increase in the primary residence credit only applies to primary residences, does not apply to commercial property. So there's a differentiate between those two. Another one of the bills that we have been, uh, watching and testifying in favor of, it would be 1577, which deals with wastewater collection and treatment systems. Originally, that was proposed to have $50 million in there. Um, they have kind of sliced that in half, um, brought that number down to $25 million. And again, the max that one community could apply for would be 12 and a half million dollars. But that would also be subject to, that would be a 60% grant. So you'd have to spend between 18 and 20 million dollars to get that full 12 and a half million. Could be used for wastewater collection and for treatment system. So while we're still, this is one of the first times that the state has stepped in with grant dollars for wastewater treatment systems and collection systems. It's a good, it's a start. We would have liked very much to have the $50 million remain in there. Um, lots of work left on the legislative side as far as where are all the dollars? I think I heard today there, I'm not sure what, they don't know what the final number is on whether they're over or under, um, their budgetary amounts at this point in time because of all the bills that sometimes get moved from one side to the other side. And then they meet in conference committee towards the end of the session to iron those details out. So those are, um, three of the big bills that we've been following. Um, obviously there are many more, um, but they will start their work again, I believe, tomorrow. Um, those days may not count as the part of the 80 days, because if they don't gavel in, um, for a full house or floor session, those days do not count towards the 80. So we will see what shakes out and we'll keep a, a close eye on those as we move forward. If there are any questions, we'd certainly be able to, um,
Any questions for Mr. Newbauer?
Nope.
Thank you, Jim. Let's move on to, uh, agenda item K, resolution and ordinances, number one. Andrew, second and final consideration of ordinance 1461 related to extension of the zoning moratorium.
Mayor Freilich, Commissioners, ordinance 1461 is included in the packet. We've made no changes and the recommendation is to approve. This relates to the extension of the zoning moratorium that pertains to the self-storage developments. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Andrew?
Mayor and Andrew, I asked this last time too on the first consideration, but since then, have we had any, anybody reach out, uh, about this moratorium and, you know, wanting to put anything forward at this point?
Mayor Freilich, Commissioner Heinchan, uh, no outreach.
I'll move to appoint, approve ordinance 1461. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Schoburg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Heinchan.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number two, introduction and first consideration of ordinance number 1462, which creates the prohibited camping ordinance. Deputy Chief Beer.
Mayor Freilich, Commissioners, thank you. I have the introduction and first consideration of ordinance 1462 creating a prohibited camping ordinance. Some background on this. Cities in North Dakota, including Bismarck and Fargo, have recently passed ordinances prohibiting camp, camping on public property and right of ways. Commissioner Schoburg has requested that staff bring forward a proposed ordinance for the board's consideration. This ordinance would largely mirror the ordinance currently in place in Bismarck. The ordinance prohibits camping on public property and rights of way. It also provides the police department the tools to give notice for personal property to be removed from public places. The sleeping portion of the ordinance is narrower, does not prohibit sleeping at parks or other public property, except on rights of way like alley, streets and sidewalks. This ordinance has been reviewed by the police department, Public Works, the Park District, the Water Resource District, and Western Plains Public Health has been notified of the update. Information also was related to, um, related to the ordinance has been provided to area human service providers. The ordinance is similar to those being enacted by cities in North Dakota and across the country. It provides protection for the public and for unhoused individuals and reduces liability for the city, as it provides notice and sets a process for removing items of personal property left on public property. A violation of the ordinance is a Class B misdemeanor, carries a maximum penalty of 30 days in prison and $1,500 fine or both. If the ordinance is enacted, the police department will provide guidance to its officers on implementing the ordinance as well as a template for 24-hour notice and information on resources for individuals affected by homelessness in the Bismarck Mandan community. We recommend approval of, of the introduction and first consideration of ordinance 1462. Late today, I did receive a letter from the Executive Director of Ministry on the Margins. It's a Bismarck resource for people that are in need of services. In general, the letter is in support of the ordinance. Their experience with the ordinance in Bismarck has been positive when it includes collaboration efforts of law enforcement and social services. She states that their experience with Bismarck Police has been respectful and rather than aggressive. The approach not only provides for public safety and public health in our communities, but addresses the individuals who are homeless, shows them dignity, gives them alternatives to provide the continuing cycle, to prevent the continuing cycle of homelessness. That was from Sister Kathleen Atkinson, Executive Director. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Deputy Chief Beer? Hearing none. What are your wishes?
I'll move to approve the introduction and first consideration of ordinance number 1462, which creates a prohibited camping ordinance.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoberg, a second by Commissioner Rohr. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Rohr.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Thank you, Deputy Chief. There is no other business. Future meeting dates for the Board of City Commissioners, March 18th, 2025 at 5:30. March 25th, 2025 at 5:30. That's a special meeting, working session. April 1st, 2025 at 5:30. That's Board of Equalization at 7:00. And April 15th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. With that, be kind to your neighbor. And it is onward and upward, Mandan. This meeting is adjourned.